Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is made available through cooperation with the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission meets on the first and third Thursdays of each month. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The planning meeting agenda is posted on the city's website at www.bakersfieldcity.us.
Presiding over today's meeting, Chair Larry Coleman.
Good afternoon. It is my pleasure to call to order the February 4th, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Coleman?
Here.
Commissioner Rudnick? Commissioner Bell?
Here.
Commissioner Bowers?
Here.
Commissioner Kater?
Here.
Commissioner Lomas?
Here.
Thank you.
Let the record show, Chair Coleman, that Commissioners Rudnick and Wade are absent.
Okay, thank you. On March 4th, Governor News-- this is actually March 4th, 2020, Governor Newsom declared a state of emergency in California due to the threat of COVID-19. The governor also passed several executive orders related to social distancing, shelter-at-home practices, and included the suspension of some components of the Brown Act related to public meetings like this one. In addition, due to recent surge of COVID-19 and based on guidance from the governor's-- California Governor's Office, the Department of Public Health, as well as the county health officer, the City of Bakersfield has limited this meeting to the general public. As such, only those interested in making a comment during consent and non-consent public hearing items will be allowed to do so. The public may stream a live view of this meeting by going to the website listed on the agenda or by watching it on your local government channel. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Ready pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item three, public statements.
Thank you. As stated previously, the recent COVID-19 surge and the governor's executive orders have waived certain provisions of the Brown Act related to physical presence-- public-- I'm sorry, physical presence. Public comments have been encouraged to be made by email and phone call to the Development Services Department Planning Division. Those received in such a manner have been provided to the commission and will be made part of the official record of tonight's meeting. As such, there will not be any in-person public statements tonight. Next item, please.
Agenda item four, consent calendar items.
All matters listed under this-- under the consent calendar items do not require a public hearing and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of said items unless staff or a commissioner request specific items be discussed and/or removed for separate consideration. May I have a motion approving the consent items?
Mr. Chairman, motion to adopt.
With Commissioner Bauer?
I'll second that.
And Commissioner Kater. Madam Clerk, may I have-- are we doing a roll call vote? Is that what we're doing? May I have a roll call vote, please? Okay, are we?
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas? Motion passes with Commissioner Rudnick and Wade absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item five, consent public hearings.
Thank you. Now is the time for consent public hearing items. If the item is not removed by a commissioner, staff, or a member of the public, the commission will vote on all items in one motion without further comment. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the non-consent public hearing items. At this time, I will open all of the consent public hearing items. Does any member of the public wish to remove the consent public hearing item? Please, if so, please come to this podium and state your name.
Good evening, Chair Coleman. My name is Patricia Newquist, the applicant. We would like to pull item 5B from consent to further explain some of the requests in the application.
Thank you. Item 5B will be moved to the end of our agenda tonight. The staff have an update on 5A?
Just noting, item 5A is going to be continued for two weeks to February 18th.
All right, so we don't have any-- we don't have any consent calendar items now, correct? So we don't need to do a vote or anything, right? We can move on?
Well, you vote to continue the 5A--
Oh, I see. Okay, all right. All right, thank you, I'm sorry. Okay, this time, the consent public hearing items not removed are now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff recommendation on the consent public hearing items not removed, incorporating all staff memorandum and revised staff recommendations? So basically, we're making a motion to put off item 5A till February 18th?
Correct.
We have a motion--
I'll make that motion to continue item 5A to February 18th, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bell.
And just to clarify, it remains open until that date, item 5A?
Okay.
To that, the date of February 18th, 2021.
Okay.
I'll add that to my motion, thank you.
May I have a second, please?
A second.
That's Commissioner Bauer. Madam Clerk, may I-- please-- may you please conduct a roll call vote?
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas?
Yes.
Motion passes with Commissioner Rudnick and Wade absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item six, non-consent public hearings.
Thank you. Before we begin, I just wanted to make note that the commission has a court reporter present tonight to record all the proceedings on item six.
6A.
Just 6A, I'm sorry. Okay. Now is the time for non-consent public hearing items. Before we begin, I want to explain how each hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in opposition to staff's recommendation will be allowed to speak. Those in favor of staff's recommendation will be able to speak after all those in opposition have spoken. Each side will be given five minutes to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. Written comments may be given to the clerk who will provide copies to the commission. Please be respectful of others who will-- participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear way. Mr. Johnson, would you please provide us with your staff report?
Good evening, Chair Coleman, Commissioners, members of the audience. Item 6A is an appeal to a site plan review that approved a-- an outpatient clinic. The site is located on Newton Drive, generally between Olive Drive to the north, Hagan Road to the south. The site is Zoned M2, General Manufacturing. This project was submitted and reviewed as a community-based outpatient clinic. Specifically, this clinic was for the Department of Veterans Affairs. The clinic will operate weekdays from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and there are no accommodations for overnight stay. The clinic will offer primary and specialty care to include audiology, physical and occupational therapy, and ancillary and diagnostic services. Access to the site is from Newton, Lanco, and Street A to the south. The clinic is a single-story building consisting of 39,648 square feet. According to the application, the building will have 30,100 net usable square feet. Upon application submittal, the project was reviewed by the Site Plan Review Committee consisting of representatives from seven different city divisions. City staff also conducted an environmental review of the project pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA. In compliance with SEQA, a mitigated negative declaration, or MND, was prepared and adopted by your commission on January 7th, 2021. Following adoption of the MND, the Site Plan Review was approved by the Development Services Department the following day. The municipal code allows for an appeal to be filed on a site plan review within 10 days of the date of approval. The municipal code also states that the appeal must set forth the precise basis and issues on appeal. An appeal was filed in a timely manner by Hagan Law Group on behalf of Progress for Bakersfield Veterans, which is the owner of the existing outpatient clinic. There were five issues identified on appeal. These are discussed in detail in the staff report and will be summarized in this presentation. Appeal issue number one, the Site Plan Review application was incomplete and misleading. The appellant failed to provide a precise basis for why the Site Plan Review application was incomplete or misleading. Nonetheless, the applicant submitted a complete application packet demonstrating the proposed improvements would be constructed in accordance with city ordinances and standards. The packet also included sufficient information to determine the project would be consistent with the general plan and zoning ordinance, and it also provided the necessary information to determine if the project was subject to review pursuant to SEQA. Therefore, the city reviewed a complete Site Plan Review application per the requirements outlined in the Bakersfield Municipal Code. Appeal issue number two, the Site Plan Review was conducted based on an inadequate project description and incorrectly concludes that the project is a permitted use under the city's M2 zoning ordinance. The appellant failed to provide a precise basis for why the Site Plan Review had an inadequate project description and why the project is not permitted in the M2 zone. Nonetheless, adequate information for preparation of an initial study was provided, consistent with State SEQA Guidelines Section 15124, which defines the types of information that should be included in a project description. Regarding the issue that the project is not a permitted use in the M2 zone, the city uses a pyramid-style zoning, which allows for permitted uses in the more restrictive zones to be considered permitted uses in the less restrictive zones. For example, the CO zone is the most restrictive non-residential type of zoning. This is followed by the C1 zone, which allows permitted uses in the CO zone plus additional uses. The C2 zone allows permitted uses in the C1 and CO zones plus additional uses, and this continues down through the M2 zone. In reviewing the project, staff concluded the outpatient clinic was a permitted use in the CO zone. Specifically, the municipal code allows for medical, dental, psychiatric, and other health practitioner offices and clinics and pharmacies in conjunction with medical clinics. Therefore, the project is a permitted use in the M2 zone. Appeal issue number three, the project description fails to disclose that the clinic will treat patients with contagious diseases, those suffering from drug and/or alcohol addiction, as well as provide mental health services, which change the land use compatibility analysis. Such a use requires a conditional use permit, or CUP, in the M2 zone. Referring back to the side-- this slide, the appellant is referencing a section of the municipal code which states that "clinics, hospitals, sanitariums, and other buildings for contagious mental drug or alcohol addiction cases requires a conditional use permit in the M1 zone." This conditional use permit provision was added to the municipal code in 1982. Staff has consistently distinguished the differences between the permitted and conditionally permitted uses based in part on length of stay. For example, the municipal code's definition for hospital and sanitarium includes overnight stays or longer. Additionally, the parking requirements distinguish between specialized medical offices and that of inpatient clinics and other overnight treatment or extended facilities. Since the conditionally permitted use is intended to encompass inpatient facilities with overnight stays, and the proposed project is an outpatient clinic with no overnight services, it can be concluded a conditional use permit is not required. It's also worth noting that the existing VA clinic at 1801 Westwind Drive was approved in 1991 in the M1 zone. A conditional use permit was not required, and the project was reviewed by a Site Plan Review similar to the process reviewed for the Newton site. Therefore, it was staff's position at the time the existing VA clinic was approved and continues to be that the VA outpatient clinic does not require a conditional use permit in the M1 or M2 zones. Appeal issue number four, there are a number of project conditions contained in the Site Plan Review conditions that should have been incorporated into the mitigated negative declarations mitigation monitoring and reporting plan as mitigation measures. The MND appears to rely on these conditions to mitigate certain impacts that have not been sufficiently analyzed to lessen significant level. The appellant failed to provide a precise basis for, nor did they specify which conditions they believe should be included as mitigation, or which impacts have not been sufficiently analyzed. Nonetheless, the adopted MND concluded that no significant impacts would occur as a result of the project and that all potential impacts were appropriately mitigated. Appeal issue number five, the decision to approve the Site Plan Review was based on a legally deficient MND and must be overturned. The environmental review process must be re-initiated to evaluate the project based on a complete and accurate project description and the full range of potentially significant impacts that would result from the project and to account for the requirements requirement to obtain a CUP. The appellant failed to provide a precise basis for the significant impacts they believe will result from the project. Therefore, based on the analysis completed and information available, it is staff's determination the project would not result in any significant impacts, and no additional analysis is warranted. As part of the public notification process for this appeal, Hagan Law Group representing the appellant submitted comments which were addressed in the staff report. Staff also received comments from Rutan and Tucker, representing the project applicant. Those comments were received after release of the staff report and provided to your commission as part of the director's memorandum. Representatives from each of these law firms are in the audience tonight. And not least, Daniel Betts, a veteran of the U.S. Navy, also submitted comments that were attached to the director's memorandum, requesting your commission deny the appeal. The municipal code provides the authority your commission has regarding Site Plan Review appeals. Your commission has the authority to make a determination of whether or not an adopted development standard, zoning regulation, or policy applied or not applied to the project was done consistent with authority granted by city ordinance. No authority is granted to add, delete, change, or modify adopted standards, regulations, or policies, except required to comply with conditions necessary to mitigate unavoidable environmental impacts. Pursuant to Bakersfield Municipal Code Section 17.08.080, the appellant has failed to set forth a precise basis and issues on appeal to demonstrate that the project is contrary to the adopted ordinances, standards, and policies of the city concerning development of the site. Site Plan Review Committee has reviewed and conditioned the project accordingly to ensure compliance with city development standards. A public review of the mitigated negative declaration did not produce any comments on its inadequacy other than from the appellant. Additionally, the project applicant demonstrated to the Development Services Director that the project complies with the city requirements in both design and density in accordance with the general plan and zoning ordinance. Based on the foregoing, staff recommends your commission deny the appeal of Site Plan Review Number 20-0102. This completes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The public hearing on this item is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? This means anyone who opposes staff's approval of the Site Plan Review of the Veterans Clinic. If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Because we do have a court reporter, I'll ask you to please spell your last name when you come up to the podium.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kristin Hagan. I am an attorney with the Hagan Law Group and represent Progress for Bakersfield Veterans. My last name is spelled H-A-G-A-N. I won't take up too much of your time this evening. I just wanted to thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration of the appeal that's been brought before you. We do respectfully disagree with the staff's recommendation. However, I am going to submit based on the written materials that we have already submitted for your approval or consideration, I should say. That would include the notice of appeal that was filed on the 15th of January, as well as the additional letter submitted on the 26th of January, and the associated materials that are cited in that letter. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. However, I am going to go ahead and proceed to submit on the materials already provided.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of staff's recommendation? Meaning, anyone who favors staff's approval of the Site Plan Review of the Veterans Clinic? If so, please step to the microphone and identify yourself and proceed. And again, please spell your last name for the clerk.
Good evening. My name is Alan Fenstermacher. You might be here for a while when I spell that one, but it's F-E-N-S-T-E-R-M-A-C-H-E-R. And I'm with the law firm of Rutan and Tucker, and I represent the applicant. I will also be brief, and I just want to first, on behalf of my client, thank staff for all their efforts thus far, and I thought the presentation was very comprehensive and We submitted a letter to the commission. Hopefully, you received that today. I know you did. You know, all of our basis for why we agree with staff and believe this appeal should be denied are in that letter. But just to hit the high points, you know, I want to, you know, remind everybody that, you know, credibility of the comments is a big issue here because the comments are coming from the operator of the existing VA facility, who are-- obviously have a financial motive to stop this project, or at least delay it as long as they can. They've-- they've appealed-- they submitted three bids to the VA, all of which were rejected. They appealed that to the U.S. Government Accountability Office, which was rejected, and they filed a lawsuit in the Federal Court of Claims, which was also rejected. And that very, very detailed opinion from that federal court was attached to my letter, and that really, you know, describes some of the issues with their proposal. So, you know, suffice it to say, the VA has considered all of the arguments for why they believe the facility should stay where it is and have roundly rejected that. And just to, you know, to-- again, to segue as to why we-- my second point, which is, you know, we agree with staff that no CUP is required here. Again, as staff noted, no CUP is required for the existing facility, which, again, is the same use. So I think the argument that a CUP would be required for this facility should be taken with a large grain of salt. And, you know, I think a lot of the argument for why the applicant believes a CUP is required is based on the use of the words contagious or mental health facility. Well, if that was true, every psychiatric office, every-- you know, every medical office would have to be-- would have to have a CUP because by definition, they'd be treating contagious diseases. So, you know, that argument really makes no sense. And, you know, if you read the full code as, you know, laid out in our letter and staff's presentation, it's very, very clear, you know, CUP is required for overnight stays, which has different impacts than a seven-to-five, you know, weekday outpatient facility, which is a permitted use. And, you know, lastly, I just want to, you know, say, you know, there were a lot-- number of comments about the MND prepared pursuant to SEQA, but as you know, you know, that was approved by this body last month. So really, those comments, you know, aren't relevant to this issue here, which is the appeal of the Site Plan Review itself. So, again, I'd just like to thank staff on behalf of my client. I'd like to thank the commission for their time, and I just respectfully urge you to deny the appeal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of staff's recommendation?
I'm Thomas Poore, P-O-O-R, veteran. I believe this facility should have been built a long time ago. There are many of us veterans. I'm fortunate I have not had the express need, but many of our people are homeless right now are-- are so because of damage, mental and physical damages of the several wars we've had since World War II. I watched the end of World War II. I watched the signing of the Japanese on the-- the battleship, and I was very fortunate that the ship I was on was in command of the invasion of Japan, which we did not have an invasion, we had an occupation, saving thousands of lives. But the community has done very little for the many veterans for all those wars that we've had, and it's about time that something like this gets put in-- in demotion and be successful at completion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service.
Can I put something to show up on the overhead? Okay. Is that going to show up right? Good evening, Commissioners, staff. My name is Dick Taylor. I'm a Marine Corps veteran. I want to follow up on Mr. Poore's presentation. So this is a picture, September 2nd, 1945, from the battleship Missouri. That ship in the background in the upper right-hand corner is the USS Mount Olympus. That's the ship that that guy was on. He is in that picture. He's 95 years old. He's watched a bunch of his friends die waiting for stuff like this to happen. So I'd want to put that in perspective, and I think it's important. And that's T-A-Y-L-O-R, by the way. I'm-- as I stated, I'm a Marine Corps veteran. In my former role as the Kern County Veteran Service Officer, it was my duty and my privilege and honor to serve the 40,000-plus veterans that call Kern County home. It was my-- it was my duty and my charge to make sure that the veterans, their dependents, and their survivors receive the benefits that they had earned as a result of their honorable military service. So when this commission was scheduled to hear this project some weeks ago, there were available-- details were available online, and several of those things stuck out to me that I thought were great for this-- for this site. Its proximity to State Route 99, the fact that it is-- there's a fire department, literally, the fire department's right across the street, and there's a secondary backup one like 2.8 miles away. And the-- the site is spacious, 6.9 acres. It's got a healing garden, a walking path, tons of places for people to sit down, and even a place for people to sit and eat lunch at some point in time when we get done with the virus restrictions. The quest for this replacement VA, community-based outpatient clinic, or as we call it in the service, the SEBOC, has been going on for 11 years, and I have watched tons of my family, my friends, including my late dad, who was a World War II bomber pilot, was shot down during World War II. He died before this clinic could-- could come to fruition. So it's been going on for 11 years, and I-- we've seen-- we've seen the clinic come. We've got our hopes up, thousands-- got our hopes up thousands, lots of times, not thousands of times, but lots of times, only to see them doused by either bureaucratic delays or delays from outside pressure. And I think it's time to move, to move forward on that. Certainly, the current location has outlived its design lifespan, and the interior is crowded, and I will tell you, I was just there today. That's why my eyes are dilated. No, I'm not on drugs. There, it's kind of bright in here to me right now, but I was down there for a checkup. And as you walk up, this is the first thing that greets you, is a rusting hulk of metal with peeling paint. Super disrespectful to veterans, and certainly not anything a landlord should allow. So our veterans have, in closing, I'll tell you this, that our veterans have earned and deserved to have this new clinic. We, as a community and as a nation, can be proud to have provided them with the best and timely medical treatment available. I hope this project can move forward as soon as possible without any more obstructionist delays. Again, thank you for your time, Commissioners and staff.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I was asked to keep it brief, so I only put the highlights that I wanted to cover today. My name is Brian Smith, S-M-I-T-H, and I served four years in the United States Marine Corps. My son served in Iraq in the United States Marine Corps. My stepson is a Green Beret. My father, brother, and three brother-in-laws also served in the military. I'm not here to say anything negative about the current VA clinic. I understand them trying to protect their interests. However, we have the opportunity to get a state-of-the-art facility for our veterans and improve their lives. As a retired Assistant Chief with a state law enforcement agency, I saw what happens when you turn down government funding. You usually don't get it back, and it goes somewhere else. It is imperative that you move forward with this facility. In closing, when our veterans were told to go to war, they didn't delay or fight in court. They answered the call and responded to save us. I think it's time we stop fighting this, and we answer the call to save them. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Chairman and Planning Commissioners. My name's Jeff Flores, F-L-O-R-E-S, and it is a great honor and privilege to be at the same dais with these distinguished veterans. I'm not a veteran, but my heart goes out to veterans. I serve as a trustee to the Kern High School District, the largest district in the state of California. Our district has a proud history of graduating thousands upon thousands of graduates on a pathway toward college and career readiness. Interconnected within this academic and occupational mission, many of our students have chosen to serve their country in our respective branches of the military. They serve with distinction, honor, some even paying the ultimate sacrifice. We owe a debt of gratitude, but also respecting our obligations and ensuring that those who have served deserve the best-in-class facility to be treated for the medical and emotional needs. And that facility is a site at Newton and Olive. I stand in support of the 2018 lease that was awarded by the VA to construct the $40 million facility in the city of Bakersfield. This clinic is slated to be located in the 3rd Supervisory District. I know this district well. I know the neighborhood. I attend Valley Baptist near the site, and I know the adjacent concerns. There's a lot of homelessness near that lot, and this facility would bring a lot to combat that, as well as provide health care to our veterans. On a more personal note, my father served in the combat in the 4th Infantry Division in Vietnam in the central highlands, fighting the NVA. He, like many other veterans in Kern County, deserved this new VA clinic with improved services. Services such as mental health care, telemedicine, audiology, eye clinic, rehabilitation and prosthetics, and a new dental clinic. Additionally, this new site is situated near public transportation with safety of our veterans in mind. They'll enjoy patient convenience, most importantly, a healing environment that is in conformance with all of the VA goals. This is the right choice in the right location and right for veterans. I would like to thank the Bakersfield Planning Commission for your previous vote. That's why I urge denial of the appeal that's before you. And as a former Kern County Planning Commissioner myself, I remember the long nights, the intricacies of land use, the processes, the benefits of projects like these that bring to our community. I have great appreciation and respect your hard work. I also respect the processes that have already been completed. Congress authorized this construction of a new facility in 2010. Our veterans have had to wait ever since. This site underwent proper review and was backed by the VA and is long overdue. In closing, I'd like to thank our Congressman Kevin McCarthy for his steadfast support of our veterans throughout his tenure. Thank you, Planning Commission.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Julio Torres, T-O-R-R-E-S, retired sergeant, United States Marine Corps. 11 years, 7 months, and 30, 30 days, oh, excuse me, 29 days technically. I've grown up here in Kern County, and even I grew up off of Cottonwood Road, went to South High School, and known many veterans that have gotten me out of the neighborhood that I was growing off of, to go to the military, make something better than myself than I was at the time. I went out, went and did two tours to Iraq, came back with mental illness, PTSD, post-traumatic stress disorder, a traumatic brain injury, alcohol abuse, you name it, I've done it. Also was on, commit suicide twice. Normally, I would write a paper, but I don't want to miss any emotions to relate to you guys how important this clinic is. There's a lot of veterans out here right now that didn't know about tonight, but I was asked by a great group of people to come here and speak tonight on their behalf. I have done so since 2013. I currently, and when I got out, I trained service dogs for disabled veterans free of charge. I don't believe veterans who have suffered what they've been through their military careers through traumatic events has to pay a dime for any kind of care that they need. We're laying back to our facility that we have now. I really don't want to talk really bad on it, but I have chosen not to go back at all for care. The drive to go to West LA or Sepulveda is ridiculous for our veterans to have to endure. Mental strain, driving in freeway, the traffic, anger issues, they get in fights on the roads, and I had a lot of friends here that have taken their lives because they don't have the proper care that they should have had. It is so hard for veterans like ourselves to get out and do the job that should be done already. We rely heavy on each other to promote mental healthness, wellness, everything that we can do. Like I said, I train service dogs for disabled veterans from PTSD, military sexual trauma victims, WMTs, everything. Dogs that normally cost $15,000 to $30,000, they get for free through me. We got people who take veterans and jump out of airplanes. I don't know why they do it, but they do it. But they take them up for free. We got great places like the Veteran Service Office that helps them to get their paperwork done, to get the necessary, you know, their disability rates up, or whatever they need for their housing. We have the Veteran, the Vet Center, who helps the mental side. You know, they're trying to do as much as they can. But when we go back to the VA facility, that is no place for a veteran to be. We're there because we have to, and we need the help, so we're trying. The care that we do get there, it is not up to standards. When we join the military at 17, 18, 19, whatever it is, we're hold to higher standards, and when we get out, those standards are non-existent for us. And it's crazy. The 22 a day, this has to do a lot with not being looked after, not being cared for. I know, and I get it, people want the financial gain and take care of themselves, but a dollar amount is not as big as value of 22. Sorry. Like I said, we've lost plenty of veterans here we had to bury because of it. And we're all tired. A lot of us are. That picture that you guys show of the new VA facility, man, what a dream. We shouldn't be dreaming, we should be doing. Like Dick Taylor said, going to war, I joined at 17, had I had my mom sign so I can join the military. I went to war at 19 years old. I didn't even have a driver's license. But yet, there I was, protecting my nation. And here I come back to go try to get the mental help I need, and the last place I want to be is in this facility. It sounds good on paper, everything that they got, but if you don't step foot in there and actually see for yourself, you won't see the pain that we go through. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Okay, does any Commissioner have any questions for the public on this item? Remember, this is not the time to express any opinions on the matter, it's only the All right, seeing none. Is there anyone who wishes to provide a rebuttal on this item? If so, please be prepared to step to the podium. Each side will have only five minutes to make your comment, so make your comments succinctly without repeating the remarks of previous speakers, to ensure that everyone wishing to provide rebuttal comments has a chance to do so. In that case, I will now close the public hearings on this item and return it to the commission for comment and action. Any Commissioners have any comments or motions? Commissioner Bowers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I think Mr. Poore left, but to our veterans and to the gentleman that was here, and definitely to Dick Taylor, thank you for your service to our country. 10 years ago, I was a congressional staffer, and if you would have asked me, I remember this conversation, if you would have asked me 10 years today, over 10 years, if we were going to be still having this conversation and delaying our veterans an opportunity to be able to get access to service here, I would have said, no, not in Kern County. Over 10 years, this has been an arduous process. It's been a labor of love. Our veterans have gotten their hopes up, and then they have to turn around and then look back and say, well, we're delayed again. I don't want to keep making our veterans pay. It's unfortunate that they have to keep paying. And as a Commissioner, my grandfather, who served in our Navy, one of the things he talked about is having to travel down south over the, he called it the hill, just to get phenomenal services. Our veterans have paid enough. I agree with some of the comments. More importantly, I don't want to keep delaying our veterans the opportunity to have world-class health care here in Kern County.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowers. Are there any other Commissioners that would like to comment? Commissioner Bell.
Am I still allowed to ask a question of staff, if I may? So my question would fall more to the length of this process, if we were to go back and go back through the city processes again. I want to hear these timelines and how far this thing has come already, and the consideration staff has made regarding that and their efforts to approve or disapprove. Not trying to drive your response as much as I want to know a little bit more about the staff's story regarding this issue.
Commissioner Bell, if I may, are you, for clarification, are you asking the process that staff has gone through on this, with this current site plan review that's in front of you?
Yes, correct.
So it was submitted in May of last year. It was reviewed, and again, it was reviewed by city staff. Changes were made that were necessary. We did our CEQA review in compliance with state law. We circulated that environmental document. That was a requirement as part of the site plan review. And again, if you recall, that was adopted by your commission in January. After adoption, that allowed us to approve the site plan review, and consequently, that was appealed, and here we are tonight. So it's been since May of last year when the application was submitted.
Thank you, Director.
Any other Commissioners have comments or motions? Commissioner Lomas.
Thank you. I've been on the commission for a very, very, very long time, and this probably had the most amount of paperwork for us to digest. And this is far too important not to have read at all, so I read it all. I'm a little sleepy right now, but I appreciate all the hard work that's been put into this, and it's a shame how long it's taken. What I couldn't find is any reason to delay this any further. I saw no reasons to support this appeal. So I would be fully in favor of staff's recommendation to deny the appeal. And if no one has comments, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
So that's a motion by Commissioner Lomas and a second by Commissioner Bowers. Madam Clerk, may we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Coman? Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas?
Yes.
Motion passes with Commissioner Rudnick and Wade absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
If I could read the appeal for that?
I'm sorry?
If I could take a moment to read the appeal?
Absolutely.
So decisions of the commission are subject to appeal by any person that believes they are adversely affected. Appeal must be filed in writing within 10 days from the date of the commission's decision. Appeal must be addressed to the city council and include the appellant's interest in or relationship to the project. Identify the decision appealed and address facts and reasons why the commission's decision should not be upheld. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item 7, Communications.
I'm sorry, I think we're going to go back to...
We have item 5A.
Yeah, going back to consent public hearing items. I'm sorry.
Consent public hearings, item...
5B, right?
5B.
5B, yeah, okay. Okay, are we ready to move forward now? I apologize, I misled you. All right, good deal. Okay, so now is the time for the, for the non-consent public hearing item. Sir Johnson, would you please provide with your staff report for item 5B?
Yes, it's my pleasure to have Principal Planner Cassandra Gale present this project. I also like to recognize a newly promoted promoter, Ryder Dilly, who is cleaning the speaker stand. Thank you, Ryder.
That's the starting job there, planning, planning staff, you start out cleaning the podium, and then you work...
He just got promoted, so it's...
What, 30 days, 40 days, you go and planner? I'm sorry. Yeah, the translator, the recorder stopped recording, so that was good. Anyway, welcome to, I'm sorry, what's your name again?
Ryder.
Ryder. And we'll hear from Ms., Ms., Ms. Gale?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Director Johnson. Good evening, Commissioners. Item 5B is a request for a plant development review to allow for... Item five B is a request for a plant development review to allow for commercial development. The fifteen-acre project site is located generally at the northeast corner of Panama Lane and Old River Road in the regional commercial, planned commercial development zone district, or C2 PCD Zone. The applicant is proposing to develop the site with a 118,755-square-foot commercial center, including ten buildings for multi-tenant retail, a grocery store, a fitness center, restaurant space, a financial institution, and a convenience store with auto fuel station. As proposed, the commercial center would require 623 parking spaces for the identified uses. The applicant states that they are collaborating with Golden Empire Transit District, or GET, to install a transit stop with an ancillary route near Old River Road that would serve the project site as well as existing and future development in the area. The addition of a transit facility would reduce the number of required spaces by 10% per the Bakersfield Municipal Code. With the 10% reduction of 62 spaces, adequate parking would be provided. However, to ensure adequate parking for the center, staff is recommending a condition of approval that the developer provide evidence to the planning division that a qualifying transit facility has been constructed prior to the issuance of building permits. In the absence of a transit facility, the applicant shall either submit revised development plans with sufficient parking, or submit for a zone modification to allow a parking reduction. The project site is a part of vesting tentative parcel map 12251, which was approved by your commission in January 2018. Per the vested rights of the approved map, the applicant has requested several deviations from the current landscaping and retail design standards as indicated in their submittal package. The deviations are requested to allow for development consistent with the ordinance at the time of the map's approval. Regarding landscaping, the applicant is requesting three deviations. These include ten feet of landscape area along arterial streets where 15 feet is now required, trees planted as 15-gallon containers where 24-inch box is now required, and to plant street frontage trees at a ratio of one tree per 30 lineal feet where one tree per 20 feet is now required. Proper parking lot shading, screening from the public right-of-way, and screening for adjacent residentially-zoned property would be provided to current standards. Regarding the retail development standards, the applicant is also requesting three deviations. Specifically, the applicant is requesting to, one, construct sidewalks, standard sidewalks along street frontages where meandering sidewalks are now required; two, to provide minimal pedestrian circulation between buildings where commercial projects are now required to have pedestrian walkways linked to all buildings in the development; and three, to construct an open parking lot where parking lots are now required to be divided into sections of 200 spaces or less with internal walkways, buildings, or landscaping. Given the open parking lot design and ongoing issues with street racing in the surrounding area, staff is recommending a condition of approval requiring that the developer consult with and seek approval from the Bakersfield Police Department regarding the parking configuration of the project. Outside of the noted exceptions, the applicant has prepared elevations that demonstrate compliance with the current building design requirements, such as colors, building materials, and defined customer entrances. Following this presentation, public input and deliberation, your commission could make a motion on one of the following options. Your commission could approve the project as requested. Your commission could approve the project with additional conditions, noting that for any additional conditions, a finding must be made that the condition is reasonably necessary to fulfill the public need for general health, safety, and welfare per the requirements of the PCD Zone. Your commission could continue the hearing to a date certain if there are unanswered questions or additional information is needed to make an informed decision. If your commission has substantial concerns that require an undetermined amount of time to resolve or a substantial redesign of the project, it may warrant the project be referred back to staff for re-advertising and consideration at a future hearing. Or lastly, your commission could deny the project for specific reasons determined and made known by the commission. This action is final and conclusive unless an appeal is filed. This project was publicly advertised, and no comments have been received. Based on the foregoing, staff recommends the planning commission approve the planned development review as depicted in the project description and subject to the identified conditions of approval. This completes staff's presentation. The applicant and staff are available for questions.
Thank you. The public hearing on this item is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Good evening again, Chair Coman, commissioners and staff. My name is Patricia Newquist, I'm with McIntosh &amp; Associates here on behalf of the owner and developer Nicholson Combs. We pulled this item from the consent calendar to clarify a few things. We wish to clarify our intent on the landscaping. This developer obtained zoning in 2012 and wanted to construct the street improvements on Panama Lane and Old River Road as soon as possible to complete the frontage improvements and create a safe, walkable community. We prepared street plans in 2017, which have been approved by the city with attached sidewalks and are ready to start construction. Many, many hours have gone into the preparation and processing of the approved improvement plans, and the developer is ready to construct about $2 million worth of street improvements at the site. The new landscape ordinance went into effect after we prepared the street plans. In this PCD site plan, we are requesting to deviate from the ordinance for the following: one, meandering sidewalk along Panama Lane and Old River Road. We have approved plans with the attached sidewalks, pedestrian walkways throughout the parking lot to separate 200 spaces. We can adjust some parking to try to accommodate as we can and are willing to work with staff after approval. Although this project is vested by right under state law, in the spirit of the new landscape ordinance, we are agreeing to the following. We agree to provide 24-inch box trees along the frontage instead of 15-gallon, and agree to 20-foot spacing rather than 30-foot spacing. We agree to provide a pivot hedge along all parking lots and drive-throughs. We agree with the other conditions of approval as presented, and thank you for your consideration of this PCD plan, with the requested exceptions and the incorporation of these additional conditions. I'm available for any questions that commissioners might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this project? If so, please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing none, does any commissioner have any questions for the public on this item? Remember, this is not the time to express opinions on the matter, it's only time to Commissioner Kater.
I have a clarification for staff. The exceptions that the applicant is requesting, it's noted that they were in compliance at the time of the VTPM approval, the vesting tentative track map. Is the requirements pursuant to the large retail developments held at the time that the track map is approved and not the time of the PCD review?
I'll answer that, Commissioner. Yes, the vesting tentative map and approves, provides the vested rights to everything that existed at the time that the map vested. So any policies that were in place at the time, any ordinances that were in place at the time would be, would apply to that map.
Okay, so that was the designation, and then...
Correct.
So the deviations that are to the current standard, but the project is in compliance with the standard it was held to at the time of the vesting...
Correct. The landscaping standards changed, I want to say, September of 2018?
Yes.
The map vested January of 2018.
And is that same with the large retail development standards that are being deviated from?
I know they changed it as well, I don't know the particular dates, but it was the same scenario.
Where it was subsequent?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioner questions? Because there's no reason to have rebuttals, because there was only one side that spoke. Mr. Johnson, you look like you want to say something. Would you like to...
Yes, Chair Coman, thank you. I just want to make sure, because staff is going to be reviewing this plan as a final plan, so I just want to make sure that staff is clear on what's being requested. And maybe Ms. Newquist can confirm. One of the initial items was that they were requesting 15-gallon containers where 24-inch box is required. She indicated that 24-inch box would be provided along project frontage. Does that include within the parking lot area also?
Hi, Director Johnson. No, that would not be within the interior of the parking lot area. That would just be for the frontage of the streets along Panama and Old River Road.
Thank you, I just wanted to confirm that that was the statement that I heard correctly. And then, I'm sorry, through the chair, if I could ask another question or for Ms. Newquist to confirm...
Go on, I'm just leaving the microphone open for you. Ms. Newquist, you might want to come back here, because we might have some more questions
Regarding the open parking lot, you said you would work with staff and comply with the condition with the police department. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. So as a condition of approval, staff would like us to consult with BPD. We're ready to contact them. I've asked staff for a contact person in charge of that area, and we're willing to have them look at the plan and recommend any additional improvements such as speed bumps along the, well, along the north side, we've got the larger buildings, and there's a straightaway if we're talking about street racing. We've already incorporated what's called diamond planters for the shade trees within the parking lot, every three spaces versus every five spaces, so that's a deterrent for burning donuts and driving through, you know, meandering through the parking lot rather than going through the drive aisles. So yes, we're willing to work with them, thanks.
Yes, and I would note that street racing is, has been a problem on some of these larger parking lots. I do acknowledge that the diamond planters are closer together than what is normally required, so we do appreciate that. When it comes to speed bumps, that is something that sometimes is discouraged. Just to put it on record, the fire department with their emergency vehicles require certain styles of speed bump so they don't damage the equipment. In general, that's discouraged, so we can work with the applicant to find a solution that works for both sides. I did have one more clarification, and that was regarding the pedestrian circulation between buildings. And I'm sorry if I missed that, if Ms. Newquist could repeat what she said on that.
Again, we're willing to work with staff to redesign so we can, we can cluster those 200 spaces as the new ordinance requires. We'll take an overall look at the parking with staff and BPD and try to integrate some improvements there. And again, that's already a condition.
How do we quantify, they'll try? I don't know how you quantify that and how you determine if the condition's been met.
Well, just like any other condition, you know, we have to prove to staff that we've reached out to BPD and they approve our plan, and we work with staff to make any adjustments that we can.
And we would rely on the expertise of BPD to make sure that the parking lot is designed in a manner that, I mean, ideally, BPD in the past has said that private security is the best alternative or deterrent to racing, and we have conditioned projects to that in the past. But ideally, we would like to have the lot designed in a manner where it, you know, deters racing.
Yeah, and my question was regarding the circulation, and your comment was that you'll work with staff and try to come up with a plan that meets the current standard, so that's what I was trying to get more clear about.
Correct. And my question, and just to be clear, was they were saying, initially, the request was not to provide pedestrian circulation between buildings where pedestrian walkways linked to all buildings in the development are now required. So that is what I wanted, just hoping to get clarification on, is that still something that's being, I believe we have the building representative here that can answer, looking at this map, too.
So although we had, and I think we've had this discussion before, but although we've kind of increased the requirements of interconnectedness of the buildings, that's still a requirement of the accessibility provisions of the building code, so you will need to comply with those.
Understood.
So just so you're aware of that.
Mr. Johnson, are you satisfied with the conditions?
I'm satisfied that I understand.
You understand the conditions, okay. Any other commissioner comments? Not yet, I'll make a comment. To the applicant, we appreciate you coming forward and working with the city on this matter. We respect your vesting rights, but we also had some significant concerns. The city has been working diligently to improve, I'm sorry. I thought we'd do that after I comment, no? Oh, I'm sorry, we got a comment?
Because you're not asking the questions to the public anymore.
All right, thank you for correcting me, I apologize. I will now close the meeting. I will now close the meeting. I will close the public hearing on this item and return it to the commission for comment and action. No, I'm going to let any commissioners go first, because I go last, so. All right, I will complete my comments, thank you very much. All right. Smile for the TV. Anyway, back to my original comments, we respect your vesting rights, and, but the city's been working very hard at trying to improve the appearance and the aesthetics of the city. We've changed a lot of codes and ordinances to make Bakersfield a better place to live and a more beautiful place, and one of those was a significant change to our landscape standards, which we're hoping to see realized in the near future. So we do appreciate the applicant working with the staff. You know, we probably didn't get everything we would have liked to get, but we appreciate what we have been given, so thank you very much. That's all my comment. Commissioner Kater.
Hi. So, instead of looking at the site plan, I think, from my understanding, you know, the opportunity that we have as a city through the PCD Zone is to review the development standards, or the developments before us, before they're built. And I said a couple of questions about, or I guess what I'm struggling with is, you read the definition of the PCD Zone and the PCD overlay, and it recognizes an integrated development, provides an opportunity for cohesive design that's flexible regulations are applied. The Planning Commercial Development Zone is intended to allow for innovative design and diversification in relationship to various uses, structures, lots, sizes, and open spaces, while ensuring compliance with general plan and the intent of the municipal code. I often think of the PCD Zone as an opportunity to go beyond what we see as a minimum project for a standard, so it is weird to me to be reviewing a project that is asking for so many deviations from the minimum standards under the umbrella of a PCD. So I think, I think I might have a question for building as far as, I do understand that... as far as I do understand that ADA requires connectivity within a site for pedestrian access, but was just curious if you could, Mr. Archer, if you could just describe what is required from a code perspective?
I figured that might be asked. So code requires at least one accessible route connecting accessible buildings, accessible facilities, accessible elements, and accessible spaces that are on the same site. So if we look at this site here, the building department would require a little bit more interconnectedness, probably between the large-scale, the larger building to the north, the buildings one, two, and three, and building 10, as well as between building six and seven, and then five and one, to try to connect those buildings and allow for some more accessibility for people who may be in a wheelchair and may not have cars. So that's the intent.
Thank you, Mr. Archer. Because I think I have a concern, and I think the red highlights is a fantastic exhibit, is the applicant is asking for the minimum requirement for sidewalk width and configuration on two very busy streets, and then pushing anyone that wants to move through the site back to that narrow sidewalk repeatedly. And so I think, for me, I just, I think the, from, it sounds like staff has been having conversations with the applicant, and there are talks of concerns based on the large central parking area exceeding what's deemed safe for the possibility of, I'm going to use the wrong term. This is just for gathering of cars and racing. I sound so old right now. I don't know the right words. But an unsafe situation, how about that? And so I would like to encourage and put it out for Commissioner consideration that the strategy to create a parking lot that does not encourage the gathering of street racers to also consider pedestrian connectivity from those buildings to the north to the buildings to the south. Because right now, I think the word circulation on this diagram isn't, this doesn't really look like circulation. It looks like, doesn't look like a connected path in any way, shape, or form. So I think, to me, that's kind of the biggest holdup and concern I have with the project as it currently stands. But I'll open it up to other commissioners for their thoughts and comments.
Mr. Lomas.
I guess it's my turn. Okay. I completely agree with Commissioner Kater. The connectivity, the pedestrian safety. We've made great strides as a city to incorporate those into our commercial projects, and I don't want to step backwards. I do have probably, I need a better understanding of the sidewalk, though, on the frontage and in the meandering or the straight sidewalk, in what the applicant's asking. And I'd like it, I'd like to understand the connectivity. We have the new meandering sidewalks, but I think you've got a mini storage right next to it. What's in front of that? What's that connectivity look like? And what's, how would it all, how would it all look if it was meandering or straight?
The sidewalks you see there appear straight. But again, the meandering sidewalks are a requirement of commercial. So when you see in front of the residential, those may, it appears straight, but meandering would not necessarily be required.
Would not be required?
Not in front of the residential or in front of the...
Understood, yes. Okay, so essentially, from the residential going east, we're straight. But then it would pick up in meandering and then continue around the corner and go north, right?
They are requesting straight sidewalks, not meandering.
Exactly.
Yes.
Okay, can you zoom back out, please, on this picture? So none of those corners have anything there. So it would need to come to current standards for continuity and for aesthetics and for safety and all the reasons why we require meandering sidewalks if there was commercial on any of the other.
Correct. And I believe it looks like there's some, there is some commercial just to the west. If you give me about 30 seconds to zoom back in, we can look and see if those are meandering. But again, I think that was constructed before the meandering requirement. Again, you can see that there. It appears straight along Old River. But again, that was not a requirement at the time that was constructed.
Okay. And across, is there any more commercial out there? On these other corners? Yep. And then we have R2. So on the R2, would you, would there be a requirement for meandering sidewalks around the R2?
No.
They straight?
They can be straight.
Yeah, that's about the only one that I can see citing with allowing for the applicant's request. The rest of them, it's a PCD. As Commissioner Kater said, we look for better with a PCD, not lesser. So the only thing I would consider is the sidewalk. But the connectivity internally and the safety internally is paramount. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Kater.
I would just say, I agree with Commissioner Lomas's sentiment. Just to clarify, the meandering sidewalk, is it part of the large retail development standards or is it part of any commercial zone?
The large retail development standards, that was what it was referred to in the past when it was 50,000 square feet or more. That has now gone down.
To 20,000, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Okay. So yeah, and I would agree with Commissioner Lomas. It is, since it is a spotty requirement based on land use that changes every quarter mile, I agree that, I think that, I would be in agreement that, I think that, to me, I would concede. But the other items, I agree. I think, yeah.
Any other Commissioner comments? I'll ask counsel to talk to us about what kind of conditions we can put under there under the public safety requirement. And maybe that connectivity issue is one of those things that falls into that.
Yes, Chair Coleman. So under the government code, like I mentioned before, once a local agency approves a vesting tentative map, that approval confers the vested right to proceed with the ordinances and policies that were in place at the time that the map vested. However, there is an exception that discusses health and safety issues and concerns. And one of those additional conditions, if you were so to choose, would have to be based on a health and safety issue.
You want... Okay, Mr. Kater.
I just have a clarifying question. So then, the, if we as a commissioner seeing PCDs that have already gone through a vesting tentative map, therefore not being able to make any comment about the design, why does that process exist? Or am I...
Well, I'm not sure if I understand your question, but if the PCD that existed at the time that their map vested is the one that would apply to them, to the applicant, not the one that exists right now, unless, of course, they agree to to the current conditions that we require under the landscaping and the retail design.
But what we're seeing tonight is a new plan development review because the plan has changed. Is that why we're seeing it, if it's already been approved?
Plans had never been submitted. I believe this is the first time they've been submitted.
Okay.
I see one of the principals here, he's raising his hand, he'd like to talk. I think we can make an exception and let him come up to the microphone. If you just come up and please state your name and proceed. That's a little bit out of a...
Since we already closed the hearing, I don't know how we...
Okay, so Commissioner, any Commissioner have a question for the applicant? Commissioner Kater, would you like to ask a question of the principal? Regarding the blockability? Okay, Mr. Kater.
I mean, I think, so, I don't really have a question. I'm sorry, sir. I guess my question is really to staff as far as, from what I understand, the pedestrian connectivity is going to be a requirement of the building department's review. So ultimately, will be integrated into the project. So can we, as a commission, for the health, safety of pedestrians as is required by the state of California in our building code, require that that be studied and integrated into the project and therefore not kind of accepted from current standards? And then I would say the other aspect is the safety aspect concerning street racing congregations in large, open parking lots. And I would be curious, Commissioners' thoughts on reviewing that item with the BPD to confirm whether, what their recommendation is and what measures might want to be considered to meet those measures? Does that make sense?
Does that question require a response from staff?
Does that, would that suffice, Ms. King, as far as...
Yes. So basically, you would need to make a motion that you accept staff's recommendation, adding the conditions that you mentioned, that you would, that would have to be based upon any additional improvements and dedications reasonably necessary to fulfill public needs for the general health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood and the city.
So before you make a motion, Mr. Kater, I'd like to ask the applicant, would you have to contribute to this discussion?
Well, Commissioners and staff, I just want to make sure that you understand that we've been working with Public Works for well over a year through McIntosh &amp; Associates, our engineering firm and design firm, to work on the off-site improvement plans. And I'd be willing to commit meandering sidewalks. You know, it would be more expensive, but I'd be willing to do that in order to move this process on. But everyone here, I'm sure the staff understands that, if we agree to change that, we have to go back and redraw and go through an entire process. It's already been approved, and we spent tens and tens of thousands of dollars. It's not like we can just put meandering sidewalks in without changing the design that we've worked with the city for well over a year. And my guess is, all of the departments have seen our plan. I have stamped approved plans. And so that's why we offered the larger trees closer together. And we're more than willing to do that. But to go back and redesign our whole off-site project when we've been working with the city, had input from the city, made multiple changes, seems like it's a little bit unreasonable at this point in time. We've already agreed that we will work with the Bakersfield Police Department on any street racing issues to mitigate that. We've already been in touch with the transit authority, and so that, we're in agreement to do that as well. So again, I will just reiterate what was said here. We do have a vested tentative map. And it's my understanding that, under state law, that we're entitled to develop under those standards at the time that it was approved and vested.
Okay, thank you. Turn it to the Commissioners for any other comments or motions. Anybody have something else they want to add? Commissioner Bowers. Commissioner Bowers is ready to make a motion, but nobody has any more comments. Okay, let's do it.
I do have to agree with the applicant. This PCD was approved, and, you know, his assessment is right. If there is no other further Commissioner comments, I'd just like to make a, I'd like to make a motion to adopt staff recommendations as is. Incorporating what they requested in the language, yada, yada, yada.
Which part?
Mr. Katers.
Commissioner Bowers, if you might, I think we're all not that far away from each other. So perhaps I can make the motion, and if you're in agreement, I would welcome a second.
Please proceed.
And as it has been a little all over the place, I would defer to the city attorney office to help me with my verbiage. Thank you. So I would make a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the project. Incorporating the following conditions, that the pedestrian connectivity of the site be reviewed for ADA compliance, which is part of the standard building process, which is the process that you will go to after this site plan is approved. And that the, that the safety of the parking lot be discussed with BPD for deterrence of street racing and congregation. And then I think, I mean, unless any other Commissioners, I think, given that the meandering sidewalk is not a contiguous sidewalk past this project, I don't think that that is a point that I would be, feel the need to belabor. I do have a question for staff in general. So that's my motion, and then I'm going to put that and ask a question for staff. If pedestrian connectivity is required as part of the California Building Code, why is this plan able to make it through all of our site divisions and not incorporate it prior to going to the building department?
We typically won't review something like this for California Building Code requirements unless it comes in for a building permit. We do a preliminary review for site plan review and PCD maps and tell them we have a condition, basically, to comply with the California Building Code. But that's really a general condition and really a boilerplate condition that we have. And we put it on the applicant to then bring in the final map as it complies with the, with the building code, incorporating accessibility, general construction practices, things like that, so...
I would just encourage, as we move forward as a city, items that will have to change the development plan once it's constructed. It feels like it's in the best interest of the process to have that identified. I mean, I know the applicant's probably not wanting to make changes to the site plan now, but they're definitely not going to want to make changes to the site plan right before they're ready to start building. So I... changes to the site plan right before they're ready to start building, so I, so I think that that's delaying, and it's coming, is just something that maybe we as a city could work to front-end. But with that, I am done speaking for now, and, Ms. King, did my motion?
The motion was to adopt staff's recommendation, including review of the pedestrian connectivity, and the design of the parking lot to be discussed and amended between the applicant and the Bakersfield Police Department. Is that accurate?
Yeah, connectivity as required by ADA, or the CDC, right?
That the pedestrian connectivity be reviewed and bring, brought up...
To compliance with the California Building Code.
Yes.
Is that enough words for everyone? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bowers, did you have something else you wanted to say?
Nope, like the second, Commissioner Kater's motion.
I want to thank Commissioner Kater for clarifying that for us, thank you, you helped us all. So, Madam Clerk, may I have, we have, Commissioner Kater made the motion, and Commissioner Bowers second, and we have roll call, vote please.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas?
Yes.
Motion passes with Commissioner Rudnick and Wade absent.
Thank you.
Chair Coleman, again, if you don't mind...
Sure, go ahead.
So decisions of the commission are subject to appeal by any person that believes they are adversely affected, the appeal must be filed in writing within 10 days from the date of the commission's decision. Appeal must be addressed to the city council and include the appellant's interest in or relationship to the project, identify the decision appealed, and address facts and reasons why the commission's decision should not be upheld.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item seven, communications.
Director Johnson, do you have any communications?
I do, just to note, we do, obviously, we continued a project tonight, so we will have a meeting on, in two weeks, on February 18th. Would also note that Mr. Torres, in his comments, mentioned 22 a day, if you're not familiar with that military suicide awareness movement, it may be something to look up, it's interesting, the statistics that are out there on veterans and suicides. I'd also like to note that this also does bring to light vesting rights versus a PCD overlay, or even a straight PCD zone, that's in the future, I mean, typically, we do not have somebody claiming vesting rights on a commercial development, but that is something that should be considered more in the future, not just by your commission, but by staff in reviewing this ahead of time, that this is a possibility, that this, what I could potentially call a conflict, we want to avoid these at all possible costs.
Next item, please.
Agenda item eight, commission comments.
Any commissioners like to comment? Ms. Lomas said, don't anybody talk. No, we don't have any commissioner comments, next item?
Agenda item nine, adjournment.
All right, I'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody, for attending.